Good evening, thank you for coming. There's just a couple of people online saying before we get started. First I want to thank Ann Pearson, President of Emeritus. And then Karen, President of the Associated Students at SCOTM. I want to thank Nancy Bell from the League of Women Voters for helping to put this together. Thank you very much. Last but not least, the most important people to hear tonight, the candidates. And I really thank you all for showing up. For some of us, this is really important because you are the ultimate boss. So, thank you very much. Thank you. I turn it over to Ann.
Thank you. Good evening. One little mention, there are cards on your seats. So, if you have questions that you would like us to present for the candidates, just fill them out. And Ann, who's going to be collecting those?
I'm going to be collecting those.
So pass them down to this end.
Pass them down to this end. Does anybody need a pencil?
So, welcome to the Candidates Forum sponsored by the Emeritus Students of College of Marin, SCOTM, and the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I am Nancy Bell of the League of Women Voters of Marin County, and I will be your moderator. With me as timekeeper in the front row is League Member Ann Batman. And next to me are question sorter Annie Blazer. So, the five candidates with us here tonight are running for three seats on the Marin Community College Board of Trustees. They are Diana Conti, Suzanne Brown Crowe, Robert Ovitz, George Rothbart, and Wondine Trimmer. Andrew Cullen is unable to join us tonight. So, before we get started, I'd like to go over a few ground rules. First of all, please take a minute to silence your cell phones and any other noise-making devices. Because we are strictly a nonpartisan organization and following Federal Election Commission rules for candidate forums, no campaign material, including buttons, signs, brochures, T-shirts, hats, are permitted in the auditorium. However, campaign brochures may, with permission, be placed on a table in the entryway after the forum has concluded. We expect candidates and audience members to remain civil and courteous throughout. What we are requesting is that the audience will not make or yell comments or applaud individual candidates' answers. Let us use this evening as an opportunity to listen to and to learn from all five of our candidates. You also will notice we are taping tonight. There are signs posted in the room to explain the phone. This is an audience release that I need to read. Please be advised that your presence as a member of the audience during the filming of this event constitutes your permission for the League of Women Voters of Marin County to use your likeness on the air in any form and as often as they deem appropriate and desirable for promotional or broadcast purposes. Please be advised that filming and sound recording is taking place in connection with the production of this event. People entering this area may appear in the picture. By entering this area, you agree to the League of Women Voters of Marin County the right to film and photograph you and record your voice for future use. Okay, got that. So, each candidate has been invited to make a two-minute opening statement. And we're going to do this in alphabetical order, starting with Diana. And then at the completion, oh no, we don't have them for our review, so make mind. Okay, Diana, we'll start with you.
I'm Diana Conti, and I'm running for reelection to help safeguard and expand our positive direction. I really want to help the college move from good to great. I had a clear vision when I was first elected to the board in 2009. And after a lot of hard work, our house is in order. Now, every initiative I wanted to see implemented is well on its way to being fully realized. 13,000 students, including 1,500 high school students, co-enrolled for college credit. Beautiful campuses built for today's educational technology. Win-win staff contracts. A new vision for IBC, and that campus is finally being revitalized. Strong financial base and multi-year fiscal planning. Partnerships with businesses such as Kaiser for career technical education. 2.3 million raised from donations and grants, and 60% of our students get financial aid. Bachelor degrees offered in partnership with Sonoma State. A productive board that works effectively with the community. And our ongoing commitment to lifelong learning and community education. I stand by my track record as a trustee, and I draw on my expertise as a longtime nonprofit CEO. I'm excited for our future. And I'm dedicated to making sure that Comdi gives students everything they need for success in life well into the future. And I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Suzanne.
Good afternoon, folks. Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Brown Crowe. Friends who know me are saying, "What are you doing running for the college board?" And I have to admit that I did not see it happening myself. But the truth is that I'm excited about the opportunity to be part of such a vibrant place that plays such an important role in our community, our community college. I've been knocking on doors for a couple of weeks now, and I can't tell you how many times I have heard, "Oh, I started my college degree there. It was fantastic." Or, "My high schooler is taking a class there, and he's really excited about education for the first time." Or then there's Lou, who I see when I'm out walking my dog, who can't wait to tell me about his jazz class. We are lucky to have this gem. The times are changing. Students can come to the college for degree classes, but also increasingly to learn new skills or get new education in order to re-enter the job market or in order to get a new job when their job has been downsized or automated out of existence. This huge shift impacts how colleges must plan for the education necessary to keep up with the job market, the formats in which to offer courses, or how to accommodate students with families and jobs. The College of Marin is smaller and more flexible than four-year institutions, and it is in a great position to respond to our rapidly changing world. But our college's best advantage is the connections it has developed to the community and to local employers who will need new employees in new and different positions with new and different skills. Our college has become a genuine partner with our community, our employers, and our theater school districts. So it's our responsibility to ensure that our college successfully prepares for the amazing future ahead. I have been described as fearlessly optimistic, and I suppose that's true. I know that I'm optimistic about the future of the College of Marin. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
I'm Robert Ovitz. Until the cutbacks over the last couple of years, I used to teach here for 10 years, political science and sociology. I decided to run because in the decades that I've been teaching here, a number of my students have faced many difficulties that I have seen unaddressed by the administration and by the current board. Students being dropped for not completing payment of their tuition before the semester starts. Students who are struggling with homelessness. Students who can't find their professor because, like me, about 70% of the faculty are adjunct, which means we're teaching in multiple places, not here during the entire week. And this led me to ask a question about why I want to run for the Board of Trustees of College of Marin. And that is because I think there's a choice between two different visions. The first vision is one of rightsizing. It's one of connecting students with employers, of teaching skills, of essentially turning College of Marin into a career technical school rather than maintaining its multiple and diverse services to a wide range of the communities. It's a vision between privatization of IBC and protecting a valuable public asset, maintaining College of Marin to serve the public. Community colleges are probably one of the last remaining bastions of our democratic system. They're open to all. We accept all. You don't have to speak English. You don't even have to be a citizen. You don't have to graduate from high school. And we take you. We're not a career school. We're not a source for subsidized private clubhouses for groups like Nevada Rotary. And we're not a subsidization of career training for employers.
So, I'm George Rothbart. I'm George Rothbart, and I'm an adjunct professor of mathematics right here at the College of Marin. And like so many of my students, I was the first one in my family to go to college, the first one to get an advanced degree. My mom and dad fled Europe during the Holocaust years, came to the U.S. literally empty-handed, and they started over. They understood better than anyone those values of today we call diversity and equity. And they taught me that even in the darkest times, the darkest days, there are millions and millions of good people in this world, and I should try to be one. After graduating from high school, I earned my Bachelor of Science at Harvey Mudd College, and then went on to earn a PhD in high energy physics at Stanford University. I studied under three Nobel laureates. And the thing that I recall most of it about them is that they were all humble and modest men, even though the world forwarded all that praise on them. And I learned something from that. I started in the software business, got married, had two sons, and then on the 9th of August, 1994, moved to Marin and made my home. Last month, I started my 25th year in Marin, residing in San Rafael and in Nevada. So, fast forward to 2014. The Chair of the Mathematics Department here at Com invited me to teach two sections of intermediate algebra. Since then, I've taught more than 700 students and have adopted the values and the culture of our college. You know, it's a privilege to teach and mentor my students, young men and young women reaching for the stars. In seeking to be a trustee, I hope to give all of the students of our college what I give to my class every day: skills and knowledge and wisdom and hope for the future. The mission of the college is to deliver quality education to all students and to be of service to the community. Every trustee on the board is there to ensure that the students and the people of this community get that mission accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you to Associated Students and to Emeritus and to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to speak to the College of Marin students. At a time when our national politics is a source of tension and ugliness, a simple stroll through either of our campuses reminds me why I am involved in politics. It's the people, it is our students. Our students are real people with names, families, strengths, struggles, and aspirations fueled with determination to achieve goals. I can't think of an elected office where one can have such a direct impact on someone's life at a critical time in their life as a community college trustee can be. As someone determined to make a difference in this world for everyone, this is a dream job. I am asking for your vote as I seek reelection to the College of Marin Board of Trustees, and I am proud of the leadership I have provided in the transformation of the College of Marin over the past decade. And I know that I have the skill, experience, and common sense to lead College of Marin into the next decade. A bit about me, I grew up in Marin. I've been practicing law in Marin County for the past three decades. And I have served on numerous boards, having been president of 10,000 degrees, the Marin County Bar Association, Marin County Legal Aid, and Planned Parenthood of Marin. Before I went to law school, I was a volunteer in service to America. I am proud of all the College of Marin is doing to provide the programs, training, and forums for people of all ages and all levels of education who come to develop new skills, to obtain degrees or certificates, and to pursue opportunities for continual learning. Education is society's equalizer. It is critical that we create opportunities for those who have yet to achieve their full potential. And in College of Marin, you can reach goals you set for yourself. Our entire community benefits when everyone can achieve educational and career goal aspirations. The faculty and staff at the College of Marin make that possible, and I look forward to answering the questions.
Thank you. Now, for the questions. The candidates will each have a minute and a half to answer questions. To be fair, I will rotate the order in which they respond to the questions. We will begin with some prepared questions, starting with Suzanne. So, our first question. The fees for community education classes have increased twice in the last year, with many classes costing over $100 for a seven-week class. What are your suggestions to keep fees affordable for seniors and the community at large while at the same time ensuring the long-term sustainability of the community education program?
Long-term what? The lasting sustainability?
Long-term sustainability.
I have no problem seeing the long-term sustainability of our community education from College of Marin. It is our sole purpose for existence. It educates the entire range of students, students needing course credit to begin with, PSL students, and then the elderly or the not-so-elderly who want to take continuing ed. The fee increases are a problem. That's not a huge one. And I would do whatever I can to minimize them. In a perfect world, and if I could wave my wand, everything would be free. Everybody should be able to go and see whatever education they desire to learn, new topics to learn or new interests that they have. But that isn't quite feasible in our world. Currently, we have done great, gone, done, made, great strides to raise money outside the college system. And I would believe that we can continue to look for outside partners that would help sponsor continuing education. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, go ahead.
I'm glad you asked this question because community education is a good illustration of really fundamentally different this community college district has been changed under the leadership of my two co-debaters here, two trustees. Several years ago, while I was serving in the Academic Senate, the administration came to us with a revision of the mission statement of the community college. And what was stripped out of that statement was our commitment not only to academic education for transfer, not only for certificates and training, but also lifelong learning and community education. They literally stripped it out of the mission statement of the college. Why is that? Because as you heard in the opening statement from one of my colleagues to my left, the college is as focused and walk with her running mate to my right. The college's focus is on career ed, is on serving local employers to train low-wage workers for Kaiser and for negative markets, for example. The focus of the college unfortunately is not on one of our primary student base. That is, people who come to College of Marin for lifelong learning. Another illustration of how the faculty fought and unsuccessfully to protect the college for lifelong learners is the college imposed a limit on how many times you can take to the education class. Unfortunately, my colleague to my right didn't know that because she has no experience with College of Marin. But that limit on the number of classes has significantly impacted enrollment in College of Marin and support for the college by denying people the ability to retake classes.
George?
Yeah. Okay, so 18% of our students are in community education, and median age is 63.
George, would you please stop him in the microphone?
Okay, better?
Turn it on.
It's on.
We need closer, crank closer to the master.
Right. I need longer lips. Anyway, so, the median age is 63. Translation, we serve lots of seniors, excuse me, mature adults, our Emeritus fellow students. Our community education catalog is 30 pages of a wide range of course offerings, 100 classes in 23 areas, including classes in hospitality, classes at the new demonstration kitchen at IBC. Now, there's a concern that course fees are expensive, and they are, especially for seniors and SCON members. Now, I would advocate a study taking a hard look at the expenses involved in the production of community education courses to see where savings can be gained so that course fees for seniors can be lowered or even eliminated. For example, the mailing of the 30-page paper course catalog to 65,000 households in Marin costs about $100,000. Rather than mail the entire catalog to college community or postcard with the online URL, QR code, and all the rest, so that we can eliminate about $80,000 of cost. If you spread that out over the 443 students that attend, it's a savings of $180 per person. This change in marketing strategy alone would permit every SCON or senior student to enjoy free or very close to free course fees.
Thank you. Community education by law has to be self-sustaining. And for a number of years, we didn't have any increases in our fees, and we had to go out and look at what other community colleges were charging. It was our fiduciary duty to do so, and we did have to reevaluate our fee structure. But to be creative, the college had a very nice bequest, and instead of putting that money into the general fund, the Community College Board actually voted to agree with the president that we would use that money to fund endowments for our community education. And so, over a period of years, there has been almost $500,000 that has gone into an endowment to underwrite the expenses of community education. That's an example of outstanding leadership. I know my other colleague that's an incumbent will be able to speak more to this issue, but I feel imperative that in this world that we live in of people not telling the truth, I think it's important to speak to the mission and what was stated about the absence of words in the mission. And I am reading our current mission statement that specifically includes "lifelong learning, community, and cultural education." Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
I've had the pleasure of working with many of you in SCON around this issue. And I hope you know that I've always had a very strong commitment to making sure we maintain community education. Our job is to make sure that the priority of this college thoroughly addresses the needs of this community. And lifelong learning and community education is a big part of Marin County's demographic. It's very important, and I've always been and will continue to be committed to its continuance. We have done a lot of things to assure its sustainability. So, and Wondine referenced some of them. We did establish a $500,000 endowment. And that was from a variety of bequests. And so, that then is now supplementing the cost of the community education classes to keep it sustainable. We also use the Hattie Grant of $200,000 to create scholarships for community education classes. So, I think that to focus on what do we do from here is we now have an advancement office that's getting much better at raising money. And we need to continue to build that endowment so that we can have that staying force and then work towards lowering fees. It's something that if we're committed to, we roll up our sleeves, we can figure out how to do it.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with Robert. As a member of the Board of Trustees, what will be your top three educational priorities for the college, and how do you propose funding these priorities?
Glad you asked this one, too. My number-one priority is to make College of Marin more accessible and affordable to students. Enrollment has dropped significantly in the last eight years. We're seeing a nosedive. Total enrollment has dropped 36% since 2012, while management has grown 29%. Staffing has dropped also by 19%, and the number of faculty who are adjuncts has grown dramatically. Student enrollment has also dropped significantly at IBC. It's dropped by over 55%. Why is enrollment dropping? College of Marin makes it incredibly difficult for students to afford to go here. The college only collects $2 million out of its nearly $60 million budget for tuition. We can easily go without it. So, I advocate that College of Marin become the first community college to become tuition and fee-free, including for community education, despite what trustee Trimmer says state law allows. The other thing that I would advocate for is that instead of building a private building for Nevada Rotary at the cost of $11.5 million of bond money at IBC campus, that we pull to these privatization projects and we re-appropriate that money to build below-market housing for students, staff, and faculty. My third priority would be rent.
So, okay, let's take a look at three possible priorities. The first, priority number three goes like this. Santa Rosa, J.C., offers 2,800 courses. By contrast, Com offers 1,234 courses, which is 44% of what our neighbors offer. Students will tell you that Santa Rosa strongly attracts students from Marin and Sonoma. If they can't find the course they need at Com, they'll probably find it at Santa Rosa. So, I advocate for a comparative analysis of the curricula at each school and identify what courses are popular at Santa Rosa that have no equivalent here. And let's fix it. Priority two, online courses. Online courses have the advantage of students viewing lectures when they're convenient. Online students get better grades and better retention. This semester, 6% of Com's courses are online. Only 1 in 6 students takes an online course compared to the national average of 3 students taking an online course. Com is coming along in its distance education, but we still have the potential of doubling the number of online courses. By setting a faculty goal of teaching 1/3 of their courses online, the college will achieve the national average. Now, the number-one priority for me, and that's the Balinas Marine Biology Lab. We must put the Balinas Marine Biology Lab back into service. The board has neglected this property for years, which is now dilapidating and a blight to its neighbors. Talk more about it later.
Thank you. Wondine?
Thank you. I need, Wondine, the question is educational priorities. And I think what's exciting is that we are in the process of kicking off our next educational master plan that's going to be for a six-year period, and it will include two strategic plans of three years each. And we've already had our initial brainstorming session, and it was exciting. And it will be extremely important for the community to come out and participate. We have some community forums trying to make sure that we are meeting the needs of both students and the community itself and as we are envisioning the future of the College of Marin. So, I think that making sure we have a strong educational plan with a lot of input is a high priority for me. I think also the issue is that we are a basic aid, community aid-funded district, which means we don't get any more money from more students that we have. And I think we need to be balancing what we're able to provide our students, the full services that they need through counseling, mentoring, and other programs that is not necessarily going to be replicated by adding courses upon courses without being able to maintain that level of support to each student. I think also from the long-term fiscal health of the district, obviously from the educational standpoint, is going to depend on who's going to be in the classroom, who's going to be teaching, and who will be providing support and labs and other curriculum-related activities that our staff does. And we have a challenge relative to housing. And I don't agree that we should stop doing what we're doing and break partnership with Rotary and Nevada for other reasons that we can talk about. But the district is looking at what we need to do about housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Well, it's hard to pick three, so I can try and let them go over the categories. Obviously, we know from our educational master plan that we continue to bring focus of transfer classes, CTE, community education, basic skills. But within that, some of the things that I think we need to focus on in the coming year and we're addressing are serving and changing different realms. So, we have more low-income students, and we have more diversity. We now have about 45% people of color. And we have initiated within budget, on the add with getting grants and outside money, a lot of really good programs to support low-income students. So, we need to continue those. We have the Com covered with free food, the zero-textbook program. We have financial aid and 60% free bus passes, a whole variety of things to support students. And we need to pay attention to that as well as we're paying attention to the new needs of modern technology, which shows up both in transfer classes and in career technical education classes. So, we need stronger partnerships with businesses to make sure it's really helping students get jobs when they get out of that. We need to have more classes at IBC and to revitalize that campus and make it self-sustaining. That's really what the community is asking for. And I think it's a very potent thing that we are now beginning to offer bachelor degrees. So, more to say, it's already a budget, and we need to raise more money. So more to say, it's already a budget and we need to raise more money.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I've lived in Nevada for over 32 years and over that period of time, when we first came, IBC was a shadow of what it could be. And the people in Nevada feel very strongly about IBC. They love it. They love everything about it, the setting, everything. So my number one priority would be the full utilization of the IBC campus. Already in plan are to have a number of the basic K through 12 transfer classes will be offered at IBC. And I'm going to sort of piggyback on this. You may not be aware that over half the K through 12 students in Marin live in Nevada and these students are not currently, they don't currently think about College Marin as an option because the classes that they need to get are in Kentfield. And if you've got to drive that far, it'll actually take you less time to drive north. But we want them to go to IBC. They can live at home. If the classes are offered there, they will come there. So we can have the full utilization plus we can increase our enrollment. So that's the double plus we get there. The third priority would be to help the low-income students. There's not only the cost and the financial aid and food and bus passes, but there's also something we need to do to help with housing. And we need to at least consider the idea of putting some sort of discounted housing probably at IBC and then later if you can find something in Kentfield. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to encourage everybody in the audience, if you have any questions, to write one of their cards and pass them down to the end of the aisles here and pick them up. Meanwhile, we'll start the next round of questions with George. In 2010, the college employed 21 managers and today there are 47 managers. This is a more than doubling of the administration of the college while the student population has declined. Do you think the college is top-heavy in management and do you think this increase has added to the deficit spending?
Great question. So COM has 530 employees, 29 administrators, 309 faculty and 192 classified employees. So I'm going to look at whether we're overstaffed. If the ratio of staff to faculty works out to be about .7, so for every instructor there's .7 staff, but is that top-heavy? The way to find out is to compare Marin with the other colleges. So downloading the chancellor's employee database and crunching numbers, here's what we find. I won't go into who has the best ratios, but the median staff to faculty ratio is .5, not .7. The staff ratio at the College of Marin is way above median. In fact, it's at the 83rd percentile. Only 17% of the colleges have a higher staff ratio. So yes, I think we are top-heavy in staff. To achieve the median ratio of .5, COM would have to have 158 staff employees. We currently have 221. That would mean we have to shed, I don't like this, we have to shed 63 staff positions. Now relative to the other colleges, we're not staffing efficiently. The board needs to authorize an ad hoc committee to compare staffing positions with other colleges that are staffed closest to the median, Cabrillo, Solano, Riverside, determine where the overstaffing is concentrated. Positions identified as overstaffed will need to be vacated through attrition. Our budget does not force us to terminate anyone at this time. So savings can be added to reserve and we're done.
Thank you, George.
I need to begin by, the premise of the question is not correct. We are not deficit spending. And I see Lori Ordin in the office and in the audience and I think it's fair to say that the reason we reflected the best deficit last year was planned because we were in negotiations with our faculty union and we had parked money that we knew was going to be going to the employees of faculty that had been due to them from our prior uncompleted negotiations. So it is not accurate to say we are deficit spending. And the other in terms of, you know, what percentages, I mean, for all of you who are involved in academia in any way, you know that the amount of reports, the amount of statistics, the amount of information needed to continue to provide the services that we do, the student scorecard that's required by the chancellor's office, it's a huge amount of data and information. So it's not an issue of, you know, do we choose to add a particular administrator? We need to in order to meet the requirements of the state, whether it's from the chancellor's office or educational funding in general. I think it's instructive to see that here's a picture of our faculty, our classified and our administration and the gray zone is the administration. And so I think it's fair to say that the bulk, over 80% of our salaries goes to faculty and staff. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to tie into that. Salaries and benefits costs have gone up in every category. So, and that's good because we're trying to pay people decent wages. But 11% of COM salaries and benefits are for management. 52% are for faculty. 37% are for classified staff. So, and then to, so it's, I also question the premise in that question. We are, and to also tie into what Wendy had said, we are not deficit spending. Because we are multi-year budget planning, sometimes there's paper transfers and that, and so the year that looked like a deficit was because contract negotiations spread over two different fiscal years. And in this next year, in 2017, 2018, it looked like a deficit of 3.3 million, but this is because that was a pass-through that went from our operating budget to a restricted account to set up so that we can pay for increased costs for retirees pension health benefits. So I, we're, 52% were above the required ratio for the 50% law. And, you know, the bottom line is we need to retain all good employees and we need all different categories to really make this college work.
I am continuously impressed by the tight ship that College Marin is running. If you can read the 144-page financial report, they are doing incredible jobs with their money. They have a lot of foresight and have paid down the pension, the pension needs for the future, which is what you read about all the time in the paper, and also the retirees' healthcare requirements. And my favorite thing is that in five years, they went from an A-minus bond rating to a AAA bond rating. So I think that they're very frugal in what they're doing and that it has done well. From what I can see, the ratios are wonderful. Everything that I read when I go and look through the community college programs is it takes classified staff, it takes staff and administration in order to have classes where the professors can teach the students what they need to learn. And I'm impressed how well they can do on that. Doesn't mean that you can't do better things in the future, but I have every faith that the colleges will do that. Thank you.
This question gets to the very heart of what I said in my opening statement. This is a question of direction, a direction that trustee trainer described in the last debate at IBC last week about right sizing the college. Why is this about right sizing? Because in the last decade, College Marin has shrunk the staff and increased management quite dramatically, as the question pointed out. So that the management has grown dramatically for one particular reason and that is the very large two bond measures that voters have given College of Marin, which total about half a billion dollars. If you want to see how effective the enlarged management has really functioned, take a look at this headline. College of Marin, I'm going to hold up a newspaper since my opponent talked about headlines, and it says, "College of Marin sues in construction dispute." It's actually the second lawsuit because if you go over to the Fine Arts Building, you'll see what a wonderful job the board has done. They were not managing the house. The contractor built a building with no weather security, no covering. Students are completely exposed, there's no storage. And also I've taught in that building and the air conditioner is constantly rumbling. So that the district has to sue the contractor and the architect several times demonstrates really how ineffective this bloated management bureaucracy really is. Another good illustration of this is this fog key. The college spent $1.3 million to put in 3,000 of these electronic keys. They didn't give them to adjunct faculty and they open every door that I pass.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start this next round with Wendy. This is a question from our audience. As the father of an adult son with autism who attends College of Marin, who has benefited greatly from the support, services and availability of remedial classes to prepare him for upper level classes, I am concerned about the discussion of eliminating or reducing those remedial classes. What is your position on this and if the classes are reduced or eliminated, how would you propose serving the needs of students such as my son with a disability?
Good question. It's in the context of AB 705, which is, it became law last year and it's a mandate from the state relative to what we are able to do for remedial classes. We have not actually had the full discussion about how we are going to go forward with it. We do need to implement it and it is important for the board to be engaged in how we're going to develop those policies. Basically, the goal of the state is, is that we don't test people at certain levels and hold them in one position, but we make sure that students with differing abilities come in and they're not typecasted in a way that they're forced into certain classes and labeled as remedial. So I think in the instance where someone has learning challenges, that's different than are we going to continue the remedial classes? And I would think that in our strategic planning processes, we're going through the educational master plan and as we're developing policies relative to the implementation of AB 705, that's the time when the board will be able to hear from people such as the mother of this child to try and figure out ways that we can still provide that level of coursework that may be needed for that individual to be able to advance into other levels of courses at the College of Marin. Thank you.
Go ahead, Diana.
What I do for a living, I'm the CEO of a nonprofit in San Mateo, Canada, serves people with developmental disabilities. So I couldn't agree more with the need and the priority for these services. I'm assuming that what's happening is the loss of a certain amount of categorical funding that goes with that. And I know from doing this for 18 years that it's ridiculously underfunded system. And there is so much that can be accomplished for students with a variety of disabilities if you can tailor the classes to them. They have a great ability to succeed. I think it's a real high priority need. I think we have to advocate at the state level for it and at the same time that we need to raise money for it and we can raise money for it. Believe me, I spend a lot of time raising money for this stuff because that's the only way you can get it. So this is one of those things where I think the board really needs to have a stated commitment for it and find the resources to expand it, to continue it and make sure it's responsive to the needs of students with all different kinds of disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
I totally agree with Diana and vouch for her expertise in this. Obviously, the children with special needs should be a high priority for all of us to help take care of. And as I was saying before, raising money for specific purposes is something we should all do. Marin, you should be able to raise money for special needs kids, right, to help keep them in the College of Marin. So for me, it would be a high priority. Like we stated earlier, the strategic plan is now just starting, the revision of the strategic plan, and it would be important to have input from the community on what they need for their children and those spoken needs should be incorporated into our plan to come. And I would think that this would be a really high need, an important need, and I look forward to seeing all of you at those meetings.
Thank you. Robert?
Remedial education cutbacks is a tragic decision that was made by the state legislature. The horses already left the barn. You heard the two trustees talk about how they would like to advocate with the state in order to reverse that decision, where were they when the state was making this wrong-handed decision? This college has a large number of students who need remedial education and there's a large number of faculty who are here, who are skilled, who are talented, who are about to lose their jobs. Many students are going to fall through the cracks. I teach political science and sociology and when I taught here for 10 years, many of my students needed several classes of remedial English and math, particularly in English and writing skills. Getting rid of remedial education when this college is so well-funded and has so few students would be a tragedy and a wrong-handed decision by this board. What I propose is that College of Marin go to a tuition and fee-free college structure. Then we don't need to raise any more money. The county taxpayers have been very, very generous with us. In 2017, the amount of property taxes that was sent to College of Marin rose 7%. What we need to do is reduce management, we need to make the college tuition and fee-free and we need to maintain those remedial education classes. There is no loss of funding by maintaining these very, very critical resources for the Marin community.
Thank you. George?
Look, the mission of this college is to provide quality education for all students. Look it up, it's there. All students, all students means, including special needs students. So we have a commitment and we have to keep that promise to our special needs students. I know that there are special needs students in my own classes in mathematics. Not everyone is so prepared and so as a professor, there are challenges to meet the needs of that special, that special, special learn. So we do that on that level, but we also have COM Care, we have student accessibility services, tutoring and math labs, EOPS. There's a lot of resource for students who need it and no one at this table is going to say that those students can't participate in the college. No, if it requires money, we'll find it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next round, Wendy, did you go on that one?
You did.
Okay, so we're back, starting with Diana. Okay, do you acknowledge climate change and want to take action on campus and what action would you prioritize?
Absolutely, I acknowledge climate change. I don't know how you can be in this weather system and I wonder what we are doing to this environment. We have taken a lot of steps at the college relative to that. Our buildings are all LEAC certified, we have geothermal, we have solar, we have energy efficiency, we have the big batteries from Tesla that are saving us money but also saving the environment. We are looking at what's going to happen down the road with sea level rise and what we're going to do about that. And the first place we're concentrating on that is the Corredor Creek and what, you know, what are the solutions to that? This is something that, you know, if, when you're reading the news now, if we don't get really active and do everything we can at this point, we could lose the bogging. I mean, it's dire and we have to move really quickly. And I think we've done a lot of taking a look at this at the Board of Trustees level. It needs an ongoing commitment and enhancement of what we've been doing in that way.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yes, I believe that climate change is real. It's amazing that there are others who don't. Yes, the College of Marin has done wonderful things. It was somewhat of a discussion, surprisingly enough, to put up the solar panels, which are now wonderful and providing, providing so much energy for the college. And then the new swimming pool will have geothermal heating, which was also far sighted and well-done. The college seems to be doing many things appropriately for what they can do in the day-to-day stuff, the LED lights and that sort of. I think that maybe one step they can take in the future is to educate the public. They did help recently have a climate meeting here that held at the College of Marin and it was well-attended, but I think they could put together a program perhaps and take it to the high school kids and really show them the implications from their day-to-day choices, their everyday choices, that lots of times we simply talk about climate change and we don't really give people enough ideas of what they can do. In Marin, we're wonderful. People say in their huge houses with their gas-powered cars who say, oh, I'm so glad they have curb-side recycling. So that it's a time for us perhaps to give it more black and white and we can help it's younger, it's younger students that will become us someday. So I think the college can help with that type of education.
Thank you. Robert?
In Marin County, our two greatest contributors to climate, I call it climate catastrophe, is transportation and housing. Both of these issues can be addressed at College of Marin by action, not just by talk. For example, if we were to stop the rebuilding project, the For example, if we were to stop the rebuilding project, the giveaway prioritization of the, to the, of the Jonas Center, Building 20, and instead make affordable, affordable, below-market-rate housing for students, students wouldn't have to be driving to College of Marin. We could also set up shuttle buses and partner with Golden Gate Transit so that students wouldn't have to get in their cars. It would reduce the traffic, it would reduce submissions, and the housing could be built using the same LED certification that trustee, confie was talking about. So student housing at IBC with transport, so students aren't driving through the campus. But another big contributor, and I can tell you firsthand because this is my experience, is that when the college relies too heavily on adjunct professors like myself and Professor Ralph Bar, is relying on folks, and I don't know if you're doing this, but I teach full-time, part-time, and I drive over 200 miles a day because there are no classes at College of Marin. There are cutbacks, classes are being limited, including an environmental economics class that we offered and was canceled by the administration. Talk about teaching about the importance of climate change, why are we canceling classes on it? So if we reduce the reliance on adjunct professors, we won't have professors who are driving around to make a living.
Thank you. George?
Yes, okay, so as a PhD experimental physicist and having taught numerous semesters of statistics, climate change presents an issue that should be placed before our students and examined and understood. The projects I give my students, I give them the raw data such as the annual precipitation in the Bay Area over the last hundred years, or the record of hurricanes in the United States over the past century, or the record of wildfires in California, and then have the students use the methods of hypothesis testing, chi-square analysis, and all of that to see if the observed data is consistent with the null hypothesis or not. Let them come to their own conclusions, seeing the data for themselves. Every crisis also presents an opportunity. In this case, the opportunity is there for students to participate in the analysis of real-world data to reach evidence-based conclusions. All students crave substance in their educational journey, and the climate change provides them with the opportunity to do real-world analytics. Now even more important is the restoration of the Bellinas Marine Lab. It will mean climate change research. Students will be able to cull from a large database of information, time-dependent trends in many physical indicators. They'll be able to see for themselves with their own data, climate change in action. What's even more exciting is that they can add their data and the results of their studies to the world's knowledge base. The college should not let this opportunity pass, and as I promised, I pledge to be more than just an advocate. Watch for me to be the champion of the future of the Marine Biology Lab.
Well, the simple answer is yes, I acknowledge climate, climate change, and I think that my actions speak more loudly. In 1995, I signed up for one day a week for 13 weeks with the Marin Environmental Forum so that I could be fully educated on the environmental issues of our county. I had a long-time commitment to the environment, and I think my record shows that. And I heard Suzanne mention the fact that the initial buildings, there were some questions about whether there would be solar, and I was a person sitting with Harry Moore in 2006 when our first design was presented for the PE Irwin Diamond Building. And it had nothing that we had specified in our resolutions that early on, we had made resolutions to say that we would build green and that we would be sustainable in all of our practices. We turned around and completely changed that design, and you now have the parking lot canopies at the PE building, and that's because of that leadership that Harry Moore and I initiated at that time. And every building since then has had sustainable measures built into it, and as Diana said, we did LEcertify. The issue of, of climate change impacting, in particular, in our Kenfield campus and our Bellinas Lab. One of the challenges with the Bellinas Lab is of course the fact that not only is it on an earthquake fault, but the issue about flooding and what can be done in that coastal region. In the Corredora Creek situation, we may be looking at losing one of our parking lots because it may be part of the flood control system that will have to be built in to, in order to deal with more water that we're having to take from above and then be pushed up here. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go back and dig a little deeper on something that came up earlier. Suzanne, we're going to start with you. Is the college running on a deficit budget? How do you propose to balance the budget while still maintaining program integrity?
I think that our trustees went on a great length to explain that we are not, in fact, deficit spending at the college. If you take the time to read carefully the budget as is unbelievably clearly laid out, there are two-year problems. What appears to be a deficit in one year that turns into a plus in the second year in it. So it is a multi-year project that is neutral. The college, in fact, is doing remarkably well in terms of planning for, for the long-term costs. Like I said, every day in the paper you read about pension obligations. Every city in this county is having terrible problems. But the College of Marin has set aside funds. They have lockbox funds to deal with those problems so that they aren't suddenly deficit spending in the future. They're actually long-sighted. I, if you go, go online, I have recommended their process to my city of Nevada, who is always being charged with a lack of transparency so that they can copy the way the college is presenting their finances. Like I said, all of their long-term costs are carefully planned for. They do five-year planning where the first couple of years are really tight and then more speculative going out, but they are planned to the penny, and I think that they are to be commended. Thank you.
Robert?
This so-called deficit spending budget is really a manufactured austerity. Why is it manufactured? As trustee trainer said in the debate last week, and I repeat, we are rightsizing this college. Student enrollment is dropping while the budget is rising, as I mentioned in answer to a previous question. We got an extra $5 million from property taxes. At the same time, management is growing, consuming millions of dollars more. The college is also wasting a lot of money as well. For example, the lawsuit that I referenced earlier that was in this weekend's IJ points out that the college spent so far a million dollars filing these lawsuits against the contractors and architects. These different wastes of money, if they were reduced, would solve whatever problem the administration is now claiming leads to deficit spending. But there's, there's something else as well. And that is if we look at, for example, a 22-page contract with Nevada Rotary for the Jonas Center, it turns out that we are spending 11 and a half million dollars of our bond proceeds from Measure C. They are contributing only $5 million in order to get access to a brand-new remodeled building for 75 years, hold on, for $1 rent per year. So if the administration really believed that we had a deficit, they would actually be charging fair market value for the rent of that building.
Thank you.
So our finance office under the direction of Vice President Greg Nielsen has done a superb job of drafting proactive budgets. Since 2014, budgets are designed to forecast future revenue and liabilities based on four-year indicators. The strategy is working. Last year, and this, Santa Rosa cut 500 jobs. The Peralta Colleges in the East Bay are facing a hiring freeze and rescinding pay raises. The Tamaulipas School District is cutting three to four million dollars every year from its spending for the next four years. The Nevada School District recently laid off 12 workers. And what about Cal? Our college is the only public agency in Marin to have no long-term debt. Our assets exceed our liabilities, we continue to hire for vacant positions, and all of our employees are receiving annual pay increases. Because we're a basic A district, we receive 40% more revenue than a district that receives state allocation. The current 2% per year growth in property values will yield an additional $2.5 million of revenue. Our budget includes a 2.7% cost-of-living adjustment for salaries and benefits. The budget for this coming year expects a small deficit of about 1.9%, which is forecast to be reversed in, in 2020. It's true, we show a small deficit in this year's budget, but the bigger picture shows overall surpluses. The college is financially sound, and as a trustee, I pledge not to support any program policy that puts our financial house in peril.
Thank you. Wendy?
Well, it's heartening to hear a challenger who gets the facts. And to answer the question, the answer is no, we are not deficit spending. And I think I'm delighted that you heard the proper statistics just a moment ago. We are an outstanding institution in terms of the county and the state, in terms of how we have managed our fiscal house. We are an example of other districts about how a board sets policy, particularly our reserve policy. Some of you may remember that the grand jury many years ago told us that we needed to have the amount in reserves that was the equivalent of the delta between what we would receive in enrollment and in basic A. That would mean we would need to have $34 million reserve, and that's not feasible. But the reality is if we lose our basic A funding because there's an earthquake in Southern Marin and every million-dollar homeowner comes to the assessor's office and asks for a reassessment while their reserve is non-existent, we will be basically in a position that we will have to shut down a third to a half of what we are currently doing. And so the board is keenly aware of the vulnerability of our funding and the need to be fiscally sound. We have a sound reserve policy. The reference to the pars account that Diana referred to, that was setting aside money. $4.1 million was set aside last year to fund our future Sturrs-Purrs Cliff that we are facing. We are fiscally prudent, and I think that the taxpayers of Marin County are fortunate to have the board. Thank you.
Diana?
Well, I'll just highlight some points that have already been said by, by a lot of people up here and by me during, in a previous question. We are not deficit spending, we have good, solid finances. I'll just highlight a few more things. Our reserves for 2018 are 10.9%. We're only required to have 5% by the state. So we've made a conscious decision to move that up. And as part of our long-term planning, we're also taking into account probably what will be an economic downturn sometime in the, in the not-too-distant future. So we're, I mean, it's very, very prudent long-term fiscal planning in order to do that and taking a look at all the different ways we're doing that, including raising additional funds so that we're not just dependent on what comes through property taxes. I also want to point out that bond money cannot be used for anything other than bond projects. You can't use that for any operational costs. And to also, just to say that I think the partnership with the Jonas Center is an incredibly important one, and the, the idea of public-private partnership where some of that, half of the money is coming from Nevada Rotary, the other half is coming from bonds for something that's going to benefit the college and benefit the community, is actually a very good model that I'd like to see replicated. In order for us to do a lot of the creative things we want to do here, we're going to have to have more of those public-private partnerships, and I think they're going to be very beneficial.
Thank you. This next round, Robert, we're going to start with you, and we're going to dig a little deeper into something else that's come up earlier. Would you support free tuition for community college students? And if yes, under what circumstances? Full-time, part-time, or all students, including community education? If yes, how would you fund this initiative?
I didn't actually write that question. But of course, I love that question because I'm going to take up the mantle of Senator Bernie Sanders, who advocated for free higher education, and also the City Colleges of San Francisco, the State of Tennessee, and the City of Chicago, who have all made at least the first two years of community college free. Now, one of the things that really hasn't really been addressed at this table is the fact that Marin County is one of the wealthiest counties not only in the state but also in the country. We can afford an tuition and fee-free college for all students, including lifelong learners, including remedial students, including transfer students and career certificate students. Why is that? The college only makes about $2 million from its tuition and fees. $2 million out of a nearly $60 million budget. And actually, if you do the math, that $2 million comes out to the equivalent of about 10 of those new management-level employees when you look at their salary, their benefits, and their expenses, and their extra staff. So if we were to right-size the college, I would actually suggest that we go back to where we were a decade ago in terms of the size of the management, and we use that money to fund a completely free College of Marin. Simple, straightforward. I'm talking about using bond measure money. In fact, if we talk, I think we should talk about bond measure money because I think the college is, has misled the voters on Measure C, is misusing that money, because the Jonas Center has nothing to do with education. What we need to do is refocus on education, and that's the one way we can do it.
Thank you. George?
So keep in mind that 60% of Cal students have a Board of Governors tuition waiver. They don't pay tuition. And another 20% receive grants and scholarships to cover the tuition. So 80% of the students are already tuition-free. There are several serious entailments and unattained consequences to make the college completely tuition-free. Not the least of which is that a completely, it's a completely regressive solution. The students that are most able to pay tuition would contribute nothing. Does that sound right to you? Makes no sense to me. However, I would consider free tuition for the first semester for first-time students who can demonstrate a need. The purpose of this is to give students a chance to experience college, take advantage of counseling, other developmental benefits, and to grow in self-discipline and learning skills, and to get really hooked on Cal. It's a free market, a free sample marketing approach to enhance enrollment and get the word out that an education at Cal is superb in every way, and it's really a cool place to be. Thank you.
I think conceptually, free tuition is a wonderful idea. I think that you heard me say about how I'm proud of how we are fiscally good stewards of the taxpayers' money, that we are mindful that some students cannot afford it. And as George just said, some students could afford to pay five and six times what they're paying in tuition. So there isn't an issue of will we do it or will we not do it? We have had, as already said, 60% of our students already have the Board of Governors fee waiver, and we have significant scholarships. And we have done the same for community education and for meriters. When there is a need, the funds are there. So the question really is, those students in greatest need, we have a more expanded program that we need to be able to support those students. We have the Cal covered. We have students that are challenged not just economically, but they don't have shelter, they don't have food. There's a lot that we provide and will continue to provide to our students in greatest need. And if we're talking about, we're going to take money, the student that could clearly pay tuition and not pay tuition, I think it would be a fundamental social public policy issue that would need to be discussed. Those students that are in our Compass Program, that are freshmen in high school, that come to us from every school district, we have a contract. Those students most vulnerable, we take them when they're freshmen in high school and we help them dream that they can go to college. Those students go through courses at the College of Marin while they are in high school. They learn how to be a good student, and then we provide them with free tuition when they are done with the program, when they want to go into College of Marin. Thank you.
Diana?
I'm just going to reiterate with bullet points since a lot of this has been said. I believe that prior to 1986, community colleges were free, and in, in an ideal world, they would continue to be. That's not the world we're in right now. I think we're doing a really good job of making it as affordable as possible. It's 10, 60, 80% of our students are already getting free tuition with the Zero Textbook Cost Program. That's helping with all the other, with Cal covered, all the things that we've mentioned. Again, students in the Compass Program already get their first year free at the College of Marin, and that's done in partnership with the Marin Community Foundation. That helps us supplement that. So we're looking, you know, we have to continue to look at ways to supplement that, to, to work on it. And then really, lowering of the fee or eliminating the fee has to happen at a stable. And, you know, all the points about, well, there's some people who can afford it, would have to be factored into that, but that's not something that, where I don't have any idea where the $2 million figure came from, or that would, that's what it would all cost, but I would question it. And I would certainly not advocate getting rid of all of the people who run the college in order to do that. I don't think the college can run without our very exceptional leadership staff.
Suzanne, you get to wrap this one up.
Good. I think we, as a country, have a basic tenet that we have a progressive income tax program so that those who have more pay more for the benefits that we all need. I believe that the same sort of idea applies to the college. Like I said earlier, in a perfect world, you could go to college for nothing, but this is not quite perfect. Tuition is just a small part of the cost of going to school. The college is currently doing The college is currently doing great work in terms of the free textbooks for those who need it and for food, but there are many other costs for the kids who come to school. Lots of them, it takes them longer to go because they have to have part-time jobs in order to make enough money to afford to go to school. Like I said, the, over sixty percent already have free tuition. I think that what we need to do is continue to charge those who can afford to pay and then perhaps find as much as we can of money that we raise to give more benefits to the children, to the students who cannot afford them. Find other tuition, not tuition breaks, but other fee costs that we can waive. Or like, like they said, we already have, we already have some food and tuition, other ways that we can give rent subsidies, ways that we can help this population that needs the education more than any limit else, help them to attain that so that we all succeed.
Thank you, Suzanne. So now we're going to have our final question, and George, you get to start this round off. So our final questions. Please address College of Marin's declining enrollment. And in connection with this issue, what are your suggestions to make College of Marin more attractive to potential students and thereby increase student enrollment?
It's a great question. It's one that needs to be addressed. The college is not operating at full capacity. We all know from direct observation that there's empty seats in classes, and that tells me the college has the capacity to accommodate more students. As long as the college has places at the table, we ought to search out and find students. And there are six reasons to improve and expect enrollment growth in the future. First of all, mention was made of AB 705. That specifies a much shorter two-semester path in English and math for transfer-level students. More students will be able to place into English and math and reach transfer level in a shorter time. AB 705 becomes law in January, or it takes effect in January, and you can expect enrollment and retention to go up. Second, K-12 articulation programs, Compass, Guided Pathways, Summer Bridge, draw high schoolers into college courses while in high school. And they are working. Just this morning, I had a long talk with Mary Jane Burke, the county's superintendent of schools, and she enthusiastically supports more recruitment efforts in Marin high schools. She really said to me, let's work together on this. There's articulation with Sonoma State, can teach at junior and senior levels. The college certainly has to offer more transfer-level courses and STEM courses at the IBC campus. There's no question about that. And again, this is going to sound repetitive, but by reopening the Bolinas Marin lab...
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
One more.
I think first and foremost, we have to have an honest conversation, and there have been references to my quote about right sizing, and that was in reference to enrollment. And it was not about staff reduction, it was about maintaining staffing so that we have the staff available to provide the support to our current students. And yes, we have individuals coming to College of Marin that are ready for college, and we have those that are not. And it does take a significant amount of support to do that. So from my perspective, right sizing around enrollment is making sure that we do not get more money for more students. And if we just fill a classroom with students and we cannot then fund the faculty and the counseling, and we end up with larger classes, that's a very different experience. And so I think we have to really say, as a community, is it in our best interest for College of Marin to increase enrollment? I'm not so sure, based on our funding formula. The other point, though, is we want to make sure that it's an absolute go-to place for Marin County High School students. And seventy-five percent of Marin County High School students go out of state and to UC and CSU and other community, and not community colleges, but other universities. So we're talking about twenty-five percent of the student is perhaps of the high school students going to come to the College of Marin. And we would want them to feel welcome and to know that this is a place, which is why we have done the connections that we have, and as referenced about our connections with the other K-8 and K-12 schools that we're working with Marin County Office of Education. And we are a player in the process of people considering where will their child go to college? And we are certainly an economical option. Thank you.
Diana?
Well, our enrollment in recent years is relatively flat, although it declined. It was steadily declining, as it has been doing all over the state in that way. And some of that has to do with the tuition fee increase, some of it has to do with changing demographics. Very few of our students are full-time students. They're working, they have family commitments, they can't do that. So it takes them longer to get through, and then sometimes it may cost them more in that way. So I think we need to expand a lot of the initiatives that we're currently doing, the partnerships with high schools. Now, the average age for credit college, for credit students is twenty-six. So it's gone down significantly, and a lot of that is reaching out to the high schools. It's not only getting enrollment, it's making sure that we're in touch with what those students need as we get them. Increasing services at IBC. So we're revitalizing that campus, we're making it a welcome place, we're making it a community hub, making it a place that looks like students really want to go. We can pull more North Marin students, we can recapture those students that are now going to the SRJC Penloom campus. That's going to help continuing all of the financial support programs that we have. In addition to programs like Compass, Quente, Moja, Summer Bridge, Summer Academies, all those things, we'll continue to bring students on and also to continue to serve them. We're just going to have to stay focused on that.
Suzanne?
As I stated before, half of the K-12 students in Marin live in Nevada. But Nevada only accounts for twenty percent of the students that come. A lot of this is because it takes too long to get to Kent Field, and IBC has not been welcoming. It was dank, and the classes that they needed were not there. The revitalization of IBC is going to totally turn that around. First of all, we're going to bring more students there through the high school program so that they can see that actually first is that the college is committed to providing those entry-level classes at IBC so that students don't have to go all the way to Kent Field to take them. So that way you can get the high school kids to see and start at CalM. And trust me, the parents want them to go there. If the classes are offered there, the idea that they can keep their students at home and have them go locally to class is a win-win. The new construction at IBC with the Jonas Center and the Aquatics Center is bringing people like crazy into IBC and making it, making them see how attractive it is to go That's sort of, yeah, it's, I think that that's the biggest thing you need to address to the families going in and to the counselors, the cost benefits. And just not having to drive to Santa Rosa is wonderful. And then the idea that they're now going to offer the four-year student, the four-year degree program in connection with Sonoma State will once again bring more kids in. Thank you.
I'm glad the, my competitor just said that she's happy that students won't have to drive to Santa Rosa because it really is hell if you've driven up there lately. It's amazing that students would rather drive all the way through Sonoma, through the Narrows, instead of going to College of Marin. Why is that, despite my competitors promising that they would increase classes at IBC? I think I'm the actual only candidate who actually has taught at IBC. I've also had classes canceled at IBC. The college's commitment to offering classes at IBC has not been lived up to. They have departments schedule classes and then cancel them when the enrollment's too low, despite the fact, as the trustees have both pointed out, we are basic aid districts. We get the property taxes in this very, very wealthy county where property values have been growing very rapidly for the last eight, nine years, regardless of how many students we have. And I think what it really kind of gets at this issue is a real difference in visions of what this college should be about. One of the trustees who's served for over two decades on this board seems to have forgotten what the purpose of this college is. It's not to build private clubs for Nevada Rotary and subsidize them. It's actually to educate students, not to discourage students from coming here, but increasing enrollment and making College of Marin free is the way to do it. It's not an idealism. In fact, all of California's higher education was free with the master plan of 1960 until the mid-1980s. We can afford to do that, that will increase enrollment.
Thank you. And that concludes our questions. Before the candidates make their closing statements, here is some useful information about the election. Election day is Tuesday, November 6th. And if you wish to register to vote, or if you've moved since the last time you voted and need to re-register, you may register anytime online, or you may mail in your change as long as it's postmarked by October 22nd. But my mail request must be received no later than October 30th. And if you go to the League of Women Voters, Voters Edge website at votersedge.org/cA, that's V-O-T-E-R-S-E-D-G-E dot O-R-G slash C-A, and enter your street address and zip code, you will be able to see your own ballot with links to the candidate's issues, ballot measures, and information about the voting process itself. This is a terrific tool in helping you make sure you have your voting plan in place for this election. And now the candidates will make their closing statements for two minutes each, and we will start with Juan Deane.
I began with a thank you, and I'll end with a thank you to Ask CalM, Ask CalM, and the League, but also to the audience. We do this, we run around the county, and we have different forums, and it's great to see people actually come out and care enough about the community college race that you're here tonight. So I want to begin by saying thank you for making the time tonight. In 2016, I was recognized for community service when I was inducted into the Marin Women's Hall of Fame. The following was said about me. Juan Deane has an internal compass for equality and justice that never waivers, and she has contributed to our community and those most in need in Marin for more than thirty years. It is that compass for equality and justice that strengthens my desire to continue serving on the College of Marin Board. I know lives change when individuals enroll in the College of Marin to pursue dreams for bettering themselves and their families. I am here tonight to ask for your vote and for you to tell your friends and family to vote for me. I want to keep serving on the board to ensure the College of Marin continues to be that beacon, that trusted place where people come to learn and their lives change. I am honored to have the endorsement of the Marin Independent Journal, Congressman Jared Huffman, our local state representatives, Mike McGuire and Mark Levine, Superintendent of Schools, Mary Jane Burke, all of the members of the Board of Supervisors, the Marin Democratic Party, the North Bay Labor Council, and the North Bay Leadership Council, the Marin Young Democrats, and the Women's PAC of Marin. I had asked that you'd go to my website at www.trainerformarin.org, and you'd see the complete list of community activists, mayor, city council members, and community leaders that are endorsing my campaign. Thank you for being here tonight, and I ask for your vote.
And we're going to go in the reverse order of the opening statements, so George, you go next.
Sure. So tonight, we touched on many topics, and I've made pledges. The first pledge and priority that I'm making is to do no harm. The current board has done an excellent job in many areas, and they're going to be commended for it. I come to the board to honor the work that they've done, to collaborate and improve our college further, and to introduce and champion new ideas to take the college forward into the future. I pledge to work for the restoration of the Bolinas Marin lab, and beyond that, for an ecological reserve on the IBC campus. We haven't talked about that. I pledge to study carefully the issue of overstaffing, to support a plan to evolve staffing levels to be typical for California community colleges without terminating anyone. I plan to support new programs and expand successful ones for greater enrollment to the college, working in concert with the county office of education. I pledge not to support any program or policy that puts our financial house in peril. I pledge to bring the board the viewpoint of faculty, and secondarily, as a student, I take classes here, that the quality of our educational product is always rightly understood and advanced. I pledge to study and recommend cost-saving ways to reduce the fees to seniors or eliminate the cost to seniors for community education. So I want to thank you so much for coming out tonight and giving my candidacy a hearing, and I'll be available to anyone who would like to speak to me after the forum.
Thank you. Robert?
I want to thank each of the sponsors for this debate because this debate is crucial. You get to hear the two different visions that are really on display here. But I particularly wanted, just can I give a shout-out to the League of Women Voters? And I kind of wish that you actually still sponsored the presidential debates. I'm really bummed that you don't. Because we would have real substantive debates, right? So that said, I just want to go back to something that I opened with. There's essentially two different visions here for what College of Marin should be. And we've heard it on display. We've heard about how reducing enrollment is the future of College of Marin. We've heard justifications for management bloating. We've heard defense of privatization of IBC. And we've heard a promotion of career education, with the exception of Professor Rockard, who made a really excellent case for true academic education, which all students deserve, not to be shoved into a low-wage, middle-wage job in the service sector. That's the vision that we've heard. We've heard this from two sitting trustees. One trustee who has been on the board for more than two decades, and I have to say as an independent who isn't endorsed by any of the political establishment, that I don't believe that anyone should own an elected position, regardless of what the other political establishment figures might think. I'm running truly as an independent. Three of my competitors have all endorsed each other. You can see their literature, they're cross-endorsing each other. What does that compare to? My vision is to make College of Marin accessible again to the wide range of students, many of whom are poor, working-class students of color, who make a near majority of our college enrollment. They can't afford to come here because housing is unavailable to them. They can't afford to come here because classes are being canceled, classes they need to transfer. They can't afford to come here because the board is too focused on privatizing IBC and building shiny new buildings.
Thank you, George. Suzanne?
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking all those who put on today's candidates forum and the League for moderating. We all know the importance of an informed electorate, and to that, I commend all of you for coming this evening. I'd like to tell you just a little thing, a little bit about me. I graduated from Duke University with a psychology major, which has turned out to be incredibly helpful. But I graduated at a time that demanded activism. So I went to New York City and worked at the United Nations for four years. There, I learned from experts how to solve complex problems collaboratively. When I had children, I volunteered with schools. When they were older, I worked in community projects. When my youngest child started college, I went to Hastings to get a law degree. So I know the value of going back to school and getting new educations for new jobs. I have lived in Nevada for over thirty-two years and am deeply involved in our community. My husband and I have coached water polo and aquatics at Nevada High School since 1993, and we see a lot of young people going on to school and hear their concerns. The changes that have come to, that are coming to the College of Marin are wonderful. The new facilities at IBC and the new course offerings that will bring new students to IBC are a real hope for the future, and I want to see that momentum continue. In the course of this campaign, I have knocked so far on over a thousand doors and have spoken to numerous citizens and listened to their ideas about what is important to them. It's a great experience, it's a little hard on the feet, and I would recommend it to everybody. I'm pleased to say that I've earned the endorsement of the Marin IJ, the Marin Association of Realtors, Marin County and Nevada Democrats, the Marin Women's Political Action Committee, Congressman Jared Huffman, and retired trustee Brady Beavis, as well as many others. Please go to my website, suzanneforCollegeBoard.com, and read more about me. And again, I thank you for your time, and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Diana?
Again, thank you to the organizers and to the audience. The organizers for putting this on, and to the organizer, and to the audience for caring about this and showing up, we really appreciate it. Basically, if I'm re-elected, I promise to always work as hard as I can for students of all ages for CalM. The College of Marin is becoming what I always knew it could be, and it's getting really exciting. Our students will continue to have a better future because of that, especially if we keep the forward momentum and keep expanding on what we've built. I will always work to keep our house in order, and I will make sure we adapt to modern technology in education, provide career technology education that leads to good-paying jobs, offer lifelong learning courses geared to Marin County interests, embrace diversity, and be effective in serving the changing demographics, continue financial aid programs and scholarships, be a community resource hub, and work in collaboration with the community. I've been endorsed by the Marin Independent Journal, Congressman Jared Huffman, former Congresswoman Lenny Woolsey, state senators Mike McGuire and Jerry Hill, all four, five the five members of the Board of Supervisors, many city council members, North Bay Leadership Council, Marin Association of Realtors, Marin Professional Firefighters, Marin Building Trades Council, North Bay Labor Council, Marin Women's PAC, Young Dems, Nevada Democratic Club, and many more organizations and individuals. Basically, students need an affordable path to success in life, and we're all better off when everybody has a chance. I ask for your vote, and I ask for your help to help me make sure that our students get all that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our forum. Thank you to the Emeritus Students of College of Marin and ASCOM for hosting tonight's event. Thank you to the candidates for participating, to Ann Batman for being our timekeeper, and Annie Laisel for keeping the company up here.
You have all the behind-the-scenes.
And to all of you for joining us tonight, and most importantly, for voting. Thank you.
Thank you.